I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tupelo City Council meeting of August 2, 2016. At this time, Councilman Nettie Davis will lead us in an invocation and Councilman Willie Jennings will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I would like to introduce a person that we have that's going to be doing the invocation for today. He's Brother Richard Price and new to Tupelo, just been here about two weeks. He's the new pastor of North Green Street Church of Christ and we're just really happy to have him. He moved here from Harlem, New York. And we're really happy to have him here tonight and I know he's going to do a great invocation tonight.
Let us pray. God of our fathers, whose almighty hand has blessed us to gather in this place today. God, we know that in your word you have given us directions to be obedient to those who you have placed in authority. And so for that reason, we ask your special thanks over all of our elected and appointed city and local officials. We ask you to bless their families who lend them to us as they serve us, the public of Tupelo. Bless them in their time, bless them in their obligations. We ask that you would grant them wisdom as they continue to deliberate over issues of the city. We even ask a special prayer for those who oftentimes make their jobs difficult. We understand that the hours are long and that decisions are vast and wide, but we know and we have confidence that they will help us be the best community that we can be. Please bless us this evening as we approach all of the issues, both old and new business. Please bless us that we move forward with your ethic of love and consideration for one another. We ask these prayers in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Pledge the witness to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the meeting to order and at this time, I ask the Vice President, Mark Whittington, to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to confirm the agenda with the following changes. Deletion of the routine agenda, 7.2. Deletion of 7.9 from the routine agenda. And add 7.13 to the routine agenda. And add 7.14 to the routine agenda.
Do I have a second on the...
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Davis. All in favor? The motion carries. Item 4, proclamation, recognition, and the reports agenda. Item 4.1, boys and girl scouts, which we have none. Item 4.2, recognition of city employees. The mayor says we have none. Public recognitions. We'll start on Mr. Beard's end and we'll work towards Mr. Jennings.
Brian, this past month in our neighborhood associations meeting, Sherri Cochran and her work with the associations came up, especially the work in Mill Village and the help she's given them in organizing. Other work around the city, the projects she's helped with, I just wanted to recognize her because I know in a few weeks she's going to be leaving our city and I want to say a special thanks to her.
Good. Ms. Davis?
I don't have anything other than just giving accolades to Sherri Cochran. She's been here almost as long as I've been on the city council and she's an environmentalist along with a lot of other things and she has really done a lot of work to beautify our community and to enhance all aspects of it. So I'd just like to say we're going to miss her because hopefully find someone that can replace her.
Good. I'd like to wish my wife a happy 30th anniversary today. Guess she's got the rolling pin waiting on me since I'm not home. Mr. Whittington?
I'd like to say just bless her.
Mike, Liddy?
Well, again, we need to pray for your wife, that's for sure.
Willie?
I'd like to say, I'll pick about Ms. Davis and Mr. Beard about Ms. Sherri Cochran. She's been an instrumental blessing to the community and I know she'll be missed and hope of wherever she goes, that everything will work out well.
Good. Mayor?
None.
All right. Item 4.4, the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Brian. I think I'll be fairly brief tonight. Would echo the congratulations, happy anniversary to President Brian. And again, we celebrated yesterday with some cake, pink and green cake, but happy late birthday to Councilwoman Nettie Davis. We will get into the budget process in full swing starting tomorrow. Or well, I guess you'd say starting tonight. We have our public hearings tonight. We have a large group of people here to, I guess you'd say, renew their request or make new requests for the council to be submitted or included in the community services portion of the budget. There are many people here that will make the presentation. Some will be the same, some will have changes. Some have submitted by either email or otherwise notified Kim or myself or even members of the council. No one particularly that couldn't be here tonight. The Lee County Youth Court will be making a request for the first time in that line item too. So we'll start those meetings tomorrow and be in full swing. We were delayed a little bit in starting these budget meetings. We're not behind. Just the last two years, we've been ahead of schedule and this year, we're just on schedule. So get that and again, anticipating a smooth process. Of course, we have the best budget and accounting team in the state and fortunately, the sales tax, property tax, local taxes are up. The economy is strong here in Tupelo and should make things easier for the city. We have the Southern Zone Senior Championship Swim Meet in town. This is the one, if you'll recall, when members of Aquatic Center, Don Lewis, myself traveled to Kansas City. This is the meet that we won by one vote. And they started today. The previous time we were here, the kind of the estimate of the economic impact of this group is between $800,000 and $1 million to the Tupelo economy. So very proud to have them in town. Final thing, we had mentioned the community prayer rally, the unity rally. Unfortunately, that will not take place tomorrow. Do hope that that will be rescheduled in the near future, but that will not take place as planned. Some churches are going to do smaller unity events at their churches. There's at least a couple of those, but as far as the true citywide event, that will hopefully be held at a later date. That would conclude my report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we're going to close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Item 5, the public agenda. Item 5.1, public carings. Item 5.1A, proposed city of Tupelo budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2016 and ending September 30, 2017. We're going to have a number of folks that want to speak tonight. You have five minutes. When you come to the podium, please recognize yourself and what organization you represent. We're going to start with Jeff from the Lee County Library.
My name is Jeff Tomlinson. I'm the director of the Lee County Library. Thank you for your time this evening and the first thing I'd like to do is recognize a couple of members of the library board with us here tonight. Dr. Maddie Fox in the third row and Dr. Glenda Seegers. Dr. Seegers is completing at the end of September, her second term on the library board. I just want to say thank you very much, Dr. Seegers, for all that you have done for the library and for me over the past many years. Thank you. But I would like to share with you tonight about the library, a few statistics. Last year, 3,602 people registered for new library cards, bringing the total number of current library cardholders to 56,701. In fact, over 10,000 people have signed up for library cards since 2013. Last year, 222,000 people visited the library. In June of this year, over 21,000 people visited the library, an average of over 700 people per day. People borrowed 170,500 items in 2015 and accessed the computers 72,000 times. Visitors to the library received assistance and answers to their questions, answers to over 22,000 questions. Children checked out over 45,000 items from the library and over 5,000 children attended library programs. As a reminder for everyone, there is no age limit for getting your child a library card. As of July 29, a total of 8,594 children and young adults have their library cards. And I think that everyone in Tupelo should have a library card, but especially our children and young adults. Now, last year, we had the opportunity to introduce a new service, digital magazines. City Council approved funding for this new service known as Flipster. Flipster provides full-color, browsable, popular magazines for people to view on tablets and computers from anywhere with their library card. Last year, people viewed these magazines 3,713 times and they downloaded 181 magazines to take with them to view for a time when they were without internet access. The top four viewed magazines last year were number one, Newsweek; number two, People; number three, Time; and number four, Sports Illustrated. We're going to continue the service this year and we're going to make some changes based on past usage. For the FY '17 budget, I am requesting additional funds in the amount of $7,873 to offset a reduction in state funding. I'm asking the Lee County Board of Supervisors to provide additional funding to make up the other half of the $15,746 that was reduced in state funding to the library. With your support, we will continue to provide the very best public library services, open to the public, 60 hours per week, evening hours, Monday through Thursday until 8:00 PM, and on Saturday from 9 until 5 o'clock. Anyone who lives, works, or goes to school in Lee County is eligible for a library card. It has been and continues to be my honor to serve the people of Tupelo. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Do we have anybody else?
No, my name's not Elvis. No, I don't do songs either. I'm Dick Guyton, the director of the Elvis Presley Birthplace. This is Blair Hill, our assistant out there. Thank you for the opportunity to let us come and make a presentation to you tonight. Prior to the 2005 city, the city paid about 90% of all the utilities at the birthplace and we also had a maintenance person there who was a city employee. In the early part of 2005, the birthplace and the city agreed to change that arrangement. We took over the payment of all the utilities and the city began to help our funding with $2,200 a month. We hired a part-time person to do some maintenance work at that time as well. Since that time, we have grown the property many times over. The cost of utilities has increased many times and maintenance cost continues to increase. Several times, we've come to the council to request additional funds for utilities and maintenance and last year, you granted us a $650 a month increase to help on that Together, the state of Mississippi, the city of Tupelo, and the Elvis Presley Memorial Foundation has funded over $7.5 million in upgrading of this world-renowned property. Travelers from all over the world continue to come to our city to visit the birthplace and while they're in our city, they spend their money in our city. We estimate that the Elvis Presley birthplace brings into Tupelo about $1 million a year in tax revenue. As the park has expanded and the fans continue to come, the expense of caring for the park has increased. So I've come to you tonight to talk about the future. Since 2010, the expansions have been very steady, as you all know. Last year, we opened the Overlook, a place to relax and take in the Tupelo skyline, just like Elvis did when he was a little boy. Thousands of fans have walked those trails to the top to see Becoming, those exciting statues of the boy and his dream. And soon, the lake and pavilion will be opened, hopefully by the end of September, so that all of you can come out and spend time around the most beautiful lake in North Mississippi. Now, let me get to the point. Blair's going to pass out a couple of things to you. The first worksheet he's passing out is some costs that occurred between April of 2005 and March of 2006. Our maintenance cost during that year was $5140 and our utilities at that same time were $19,000, a little over $19,000, making a total of $24,300. Your subsidy was $26,400 for that period of time. That was about $2,100 a year, more than we actually needed and that's the reason we were able to hire a part-time maintenance person. The sheet that's attached to that is a monthly breakdown of those costs. Now, the second worksheet is for another 12-month period, June of 2015 through May of 2016. The ground maintenance cost, $69,400. The utility cost was $46,000, a little over. Our total of $116,500. Oh, I thought you said just one minute. I'm sorry.
You did.
The annual city subsidy was $34,800. Gives us an $81,000 shortfall or $6,800 a month shortfall. So tonight, we are requesting that you answer that shortfall by increasing the funds that you give to us each month by that much. Thank you for your attention.
Good afternoon. Thank y'all for having me. My name is Robbie Parman, the director at the Regional Rehab Center. This is my third year coming. I'm honored to be with the Regional Rehab Center and I will say, Ms. Kay Matthews, thank the Lord, is still there just about every day helping me out. So I do appreciate that, but I want to thank the city of Tupelo and what y'all do for us. We are still providing dyslexia therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, physical therapy, also early intervention every day there at the Regional Rehab Center, Monday through Friday. And this past year, we were able to help 1,251 individuals there at Regional Rehab Center that covered over 15 counties here in northeast Mississippi. And about 85% of that were children that came to get services there at the rehab center. Here in Tupelo, Tupelo residents, we were able to help 403 individuals that equaled up to over 11,000 services. And there is no possible way that we would be able to do that without the support of the city of Tupelo and we do greatly appreciate that. Some of the things that we're thinking about doing in the future, we have about an eight month waiting list, eight to 12 month waiting list for our speech therapy department. And we have to hire another speech therapist to recognize that need and help more individuals here in our community. So that's one of our goals coming up. Also, we have a $300,000 that we still own on our renovations that we did there at the rehab center that we're wanting to do a second mile campaign. That are some things to come up in the future. We're not asking for an increase from the city of Tupelo, just to stay the same. I will, I'm going to ask our president of our board, Mr. Steve Holland, who's a lot better speaker than I am, to come up and, but I want to invite all of y'all to come, take a tour. We've got, do have a couple of new speech therapists that have started after Ms. Kay retired and after Ms. Becky Kellum retired as well. Love to introduce you to them as well as the other therapists there, but thank you so much for all you do for us.
Mr. Holland?
Any of y'all thinking about retiring? Mayor, good to see you, councilmen and women. Nice to see you. You've been mighty good to us over the years and we're grateful for that. We are a complete non-for-profit and we have never, never charged a penny to a client in 60 years of service at the rehab center. We just couldn't do it without y'all. So I've sat through 33 years of budget hearings and they're boring as hail, so I won't go any further. Just keep us where we are if you can and we'll be eternally grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for a budget request? At this time, we'll move to item 5.1B, lot mowing of properties. Do we have anybody here that speaks about a lot mowing? All right, seeing none. 5.1C, the rezoning of Grand Ole Oaks property on Building Inver Road. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on that issue? Could you please come forward to the podium? You can come around the front. Please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
It won't take very long at all. Anyway, my name is Billy Doughty. My address is 117 Bellwood Co. in Belden. I'm represented by the 117 block on this diagram. And anyway, I have never met Mr. Danny Barrows. I assume he's in the room here somewhere, but his actions lead me to believe he is nothing but despicable. He invaded our neighborhood of single-family homes a few years back to construct his apartments. At the time, well before his construction, that was a pasture mostly. My neighbors were cows and donkeys. They were very good neighbors. They never woke me up with loud cars or trucks at 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning, never threw any beer cans in my yard. So in any event, my opinion, he has degraded the value of my property. He's invaded my privacy by putting an apartment building, a two-story apartment building, as close to the property line as possible, right in my back porch, so I can really no longer sit on my back porch in the morning and enjoy a cup of coffee without someone being in my face. And it appears to me now that he's using the city council to harass us even further. I believe this is at least the second time that this has come up. And basically, in my opinion, well, I'd like to see him evicted from the neighborhood, but I'm sure that's not possible. However, I am in no way in favor of granting him any type of relief via zoning request. Thank you for your time.
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak on the issue of Grand Ole Oaks property on Building Inver Road rezoning? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your address and you have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Phyllis Randolph and I live at 5957, which is right across the street or right across the road from the apartments. And to have a good neighbor, you need to be a good neighbor yourself. I realize that there were some situations that has arisen with the city annexing us. However, the building of the apartments has really invaded our privacy and our noise level, our traffic level, and I do not feel like that we need to rezone any future structures that would be multi-level structures. I know that my little 5957, which is my primary residence, is my mountain cabin, my condo on the beach, my country home, but it's my home and it's small, but we really enjoyed this neighborhood and all of a sudden, we had an intrusion. It has increased the amount of traffic on our road. We have to contend with not only the traffic that was already existing on the road, but they have built a school out there and then there's a railroad track. And by the time the people coming from, going west from east at the traffic light on McCullough get to my property, they pass on a double yellow line because they are so frustrated. And I feel like any multiple structures would increase the traffic problem and nothing has been addressed to take care of that problem. I also manage rental property and I know what a problem it is, but in the contract that I have my people sign, I ask them to keep the dress cut, be quiet, and if they don't adhere to these things in their contract, I ask them to move. And I feel like that maybe our neighbors should do the same because they're out there with karaoke at the swimming pool in the early hours of the morning at 3 and 4 o'clock and it's not very considerate of the neighbors. The lighting is a problem too. I understand and I'm glad that they have the lighting at the apartments, but I would like for them to put something behind it so that it doesn't come into our bedroom windows. And I hadn't been able to find a shade that will keep the light out. My feeling is that if any additional structures are to be built, that they should be only single-family dwellings. If something should happen to one of the structures that is existing at the present time, they should be required to build it back just as it is and not have any other type of structure being built on that property. In other words, if one of the units burned, then it should be rebuilt exactly the way it is now and make no accommodations. The other thing that...
One minute.
Is that...
One minute.
Okay. I have one more idea, one more thing. I can't think of what it is right now. Oh, that was it. Any additional property that Mr. Any additional property that Mr. Barrows in the neighborhood would like to acquire, I would like to recommend that it be single-family dwellings. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. For a presidential privilege, for everybody to know, the public hearing was, this was handled during a work session. If you'll look on the map up there, that long tail of land that goes north will remain low-density residential. That red line will cut off in that area in the lower, the south part, where the apartments are already built. It would be the only issue that would be brought before the council on being rezoned. The rest of it will stay the same, will stay low-density residential. So therefore, no more apartments can be built. And then there's no access to the other one. So that's when we had the work session, so just to let you all know.
The reason we wanted to, in my name, President Brian, the reason we wanted to point this out to you, especially those that are here for the public hearing, on Grand Old Oaks, on the Grand Old Oaks rezoning, is because the letter that you received was mailed on Tuesday morning to get it out in time. There's a time limit that we have for rezoning, and we had to get the letter out. The compromise, if you will, did not occur until late Tuesday, so on the back of the letter that you received, it actually, it actually looked like this. This was the original request, which was to zone the entire parcel into mixed-use residential. Now the compromise is a Tuesday afternoon that occurred after you received your correspondence. Looks like this. The parcel, the one that you're most concerned about, which would be the tract that runs north from Grand Old Oaks, is still going to remain low-density residential, which means that the only thing that could be built on it would be consistent with your home neighbors, which low-density residential means that you can only put a maximum of three houses per acre. So at this point, with the compromise that has been reached, there is no possibility of building apartments in this area. That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public agenda and return to the regular session. Sorry. Oh, do I have, one more thing. Do I have anybody else that wants to speak?
I was going to, but you have...
No, come on.
Most questions.
Come on up. We got somebody else. State your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
All right. I'm Jackie Hill. I live on 131 Hill Scott Lane. The property in question there, I guess it's kind of personal to me because that's where I grew up. And we sold, my mom and I sold that property to another gentleman, and anyway, something happened. He was gonna put Ziegler Lotline houses on it. Makes me sick every time I go by there now to see apartments sitting on it, because, like I said, that's where I was born and raised. If we'd have known this was gonna happen, we'd have never sold it. But you answered most of the questions. That narrow strip, I don't even see how you can build houses in there. I mean, I used to squirrel hunt back in there when my grandparents owned all of it. But as to the front, I'm still a little bit confused as a mixed-use residential. I mean, what else can Danny do there? I mean, can he put a business in there? Or is there, I mean, I don't see any purpose for that, but this is so narrow. I mean, I don't even see how you can put houses, especially with no access, except coming through here.
Nothing else can be developed on the mixed-use residential because no buildings can meet the setback requirements the city has in place by the development code and things like that. So what's there is there. Nothing else can go there.
What's the advantage of rezoning at mixed-use?
The reason that he asked to have it rezone mixed-use residential is an insurance requirement and a refinancing requirement. And let me explain it like this. When you have an insurance claim on a damaged building, the insurance company doesn't give you all the money. They only give you a portion of the money, because they require you to put the building back exactly the way it was. So therefore, the money that they hold back is called, is the depreciation part of the building, and the recoverable depreciation. So once the building is put back, you can get the recoverable depreciation. If the building's not zoned correctly, and the insurance company or the owner doesn't know that they can get the building put back exactly the way it was, then the insurance company is not willing to insure it to its full potential. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. And the same thing goes for refinancing. The bank doesn't want a piece of collateral that may not be able to be rebuilt with insurance proceeds. So therefore, most commercial notes are taken out on a 15-year note, on a five-year balloon or something like that. So therefore, he's probably gonna get some refinancing with some better interest, and he won't be able to do it unless it's zoned correctly, because not only is the property part of the capital he puts up, but the capital has to be insured for loss. And if you can't get either one of them right, then you can't do either one of them. So that's why it has to be done.
I'm sorry for the questions. I wasn't able to come to the first meeting with the planning committee, but so you answered most of the questions. That's full, so that's basically all that can be done. What's there is there.
That's right.
We still have a problem with traffic. I mean, like they said, that's a big problem out there. When you just got a gate going in and a gate coming out, I mean, it causes congestion out there, especially mornings and afternoons, but I guess that can be addressed at a later time. But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Grand Old Oaks? Okay. At this time, we'll close the public agenda and return to the regular session. Item six, the action agenda. Item 6.1, review and approve renewal of contract for Tupelo Lea Humane Society. This item was tabled on July 5th and July 19th. Meetings based on conversation with the city council's attorney, he recommends this item remain tabled. Item 6.2, review and adopt ordinance rezoning property and amending the official zoning map of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, Grand Old Oaks property.
I move that we would adopt the ordinance.
I have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis. A second by Mr. Travis Beard. Discussion will start with Mr. Jennings.
Mr. President, this, oh, he didn't check it off. So if we approve this, it'll be that narrow spot.
Right. Well, what we're rezoning, Mr. Jennings, is only the front portion of it, because when the city annexed the property, the entire piece of property was zoned low-density residential. So therefore, what we're rezoning is the block on the bottom that have the apartment buildings on it to mixed-use residential. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mixed-use residential, and taking that strip out, the verticals, the north-south strip, taking it out, and it remains low-density residential.
So, Shannon?
Yes, ma'am.
That, now the portion of the government acts, that section up there, is it, if it was something put there, it would just be only one way in and one way out of that?
Actually, Mr. Jennings, the way this property is located right now, it does not have any access to it unless you come through here or if you were to gain access from one of the other property on their surrounding. At this point, there, we don't, I cannot speak to the potential of something being done in here, because we don't have any plans in our office that says if they want to do any of this.
So if he do, it's still gotta come back to y'all on that plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Palmer?
I think it was, I was at that meeting, I think it was a fair compromise, and I hope everybody's satisfied with that. I think it was a good compromise.
Mr. Bryan?
Good compromise.
Mr. Wynton?
Yes, this is my ward I represent, and I had several conversations with the property owners around that, and I think it's a win-win situation for those property owners and also for Mr. Barrows. The property, the apartments that are there, they're there. They've already been built. The city inherited it, and I understand refinancing, I understand the value of everybody's property. So I think it was a good win-win compromise where that will stay low-density and the front will stay as it is.
Ms. Davis?
Being that it has been explained, clearly explained, that that area from the red line up would not really be utilized in a great extent, I think, as others indicated, I think it's a good compromise, and I'd be supportive of that.
Mr. Beard? I think, just to clarify what Ms. Davis said and what Mr. Hooper said, that from the red line north will remain low-density residential, and if anything is to happen there, they're gonna have to come through the development services to get anything taken care of, basically. All right?
Would we be notified?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. At this time, all in favor? Any opposition? Okay. The motion carries six to one. All right. Routine agenda. 7.1, review and approve minutes of regular city council meeting of Tuesday, July 19th, 2016. I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Markel Whittington. Any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries unanimous. Item 7.2, review and approve reject advertise, correction, item 7.2 has been deleted. 7.3, review and pay the bills.
Make a motion with pay the bills?
I got a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Buddy Palmer. The bills are paid tonight by Buddy Palmer, Travis Beard, and myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.4, review and approve resolution to apply for Home Investment Partnership Program.
I move we approve this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor?
Yes, President Bryan. This is a grant through the, it's the Home Investment Partnerships Grant through the Mississippi Home Corporation. It is for up to $500,000 in grant funding for reconstruction and rehabilitation projects for homes in eligible census tracts. The eligible census tracts in the city of Tupelo include a small portion of Ward 7 and also portions of Ward 4 and Ward 5. The grant, if we're successful, would be administered through Three Rivers Planning and Development Industry, and there is no match or cost to the city of Tupelo.
Do we have any more discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to say that I thank Ms. Terry and whoever else working with this grant. I hope we can be able to get this amount, because I think this is one of the grants that would help neighborhoods improve in the city of Tupelo, so I was hoping that we'd be able to get the full amount of this grant.
Any more discussion?
I just want to mention that I'm very appreciative of Ms. Terry for submitting this resolution to apply for this home investment grant, and I think it would be very helpful and wonderful to improve some of the homes in that area, bring it up to standards that otherwise they wouldn't have outsourced them doing this. So thank you for it.
Anything else? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.5, review and approve resolution to apply for Homeland Security grant. No move. A motion by Mr. Beard and a second by Mr. Jennings. Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. This is a $25,800 grant that we would like permission to apply for, as stated through the Office of Homeland Security. This would be for the purchase and outfitting of a trailer to be used as a mobile mapping unit during disasters such as the tornado of 2014 or the officer, the killing of Sergeant Stroffer during December 23rd, 2013. This would be administered through development services. There is no match for this grant.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.6, review and approve resolution to apply for Mississippi Forestry Commission grant.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve, review and approve resolutions to apply for Mississippi Forestry.
I have a motion by Mr. Jennings and a second by Mr. Buddy Palmer. Mayor?
Thank you. This is, as stated, a grant from the Urban and Community Forest, excuse me, Mississippi Forestry Commission for the Urban and Community Forestry Grant. The grant amount would be $5,500. This would be for the continued use of what we've been doing since 2014 for GIS-based tree canopy inventory and assessment software program. There is a one-to-one match for the city of Tupelo, but we are able to do that in kind with trees that are planted and grown at the Tupelo tree farm.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.7, review and approve a no-cost change order for the Kellex project.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor?
Thank you. As stated, this is a no-cost change order. This is for an ongoing public building improvement project. It's passed through for the city of Tupelo, and this would be at no cost to the citizens or taxpayers of the city of Tupelo.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.8, review and approve the list of lot mowings.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Whittington and a second by Mr. Palmer, looking at the list from two pages down to six lots. Does anybody have any discussion on these six lots?
Did we get a hard copy?
She did. Here, pass one.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Okay. I didn't get one.
All right. Any discussion? We have any discussion down here? Mr. Jennings?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.9 is deleted. Item 7.10, review ratify contract for Safe Routes to School Phase 2, Thomas Street Elementary to Ida and Longdale.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Travis Beard. Mayor?
Thank you. This is a previously awarded bid. This is to ratify the contract of an ongoing project that, again, has already appeared before the council. This is Phase 2 of the Safe Routes to School program for Thomas Street School. Thomas Street Elementary School sidewalks go from there to Ida Street, Longdale, connect to the existing sidewalks. This is a bid, lowest and best bid to Simmons Erosion Control, $420,898. This, again, is through the MDOT Safe Routes to School program that we've been successful with in the past.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, is it, Mayor, can you tell us any date set up after we pass this, when they might get started?
Shane, are you aware of the dates that it would start and be completed?
We don't have those yet. It depends on MDOT. Right now, we're at the, we're kind of like waiting, in a holding pattern, waiting on MDOT to move the project forward, so we couldn't answer that at this point.
Can you let us know when that, when you find out?
Sure. Yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment. I have, maybe in the near future, they're gonna do it, but I have asked for some sidewalks up near Carver School and Green Street, I mean, King Street Elementary, and although those kids don't walk their pants, have to walk and bring them up to the schools, I hope that in the near future, that would be considered.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.11, review, accept, reject bid for Azay Gardens Demolition Project.
Make a motion, we accept the bid.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor?
Thank you. This is part of an ongoing process. Again, I want to stress that no homeowner, no residents or citizens of the City of Tupelo will be displaced. These are units that are ready to come down over there at Azay Gardens. There are three bids on the project, proposed project, which range from $58,500 to $159,530. The lowest and best bid would be the $58,500 bid, and that is Sentry Construction, which is a Tupelo-based company, and would just request that we approve this bid at this time.
Any discussion?
We'll approve in $58,500.
Yes, sir.
What was I saying?
It's on the back page.
That fill-in grade, all that, what's that, 78,900?
That's a separate bid. That's the second lowest bid.
Oh, yeah.
Any more?
From the beginning, I didn't support this, so I'm going to continue. I'm not going to vote. I can't cast my vote for this outside. I didn't approve in the beginning, so I'm not going to start now, so.
All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries six to one. Item 7.12, review, accept minutes of Tupelo, Mississippi... Oh, correction, Tupelo Coliseum Commission meeting of June 20th, 2016.
Make a motion to accept.
I have a motion from Mr. Whittington and a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.13, a motion to... From the Tupelo Police Department to surplus equipment.
Mr. President, I would like to approve the request to surplus the 75 body camera units and accessories that the Tupelo Police Department received that were not the correct unit promised by the company.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Buddy Palmer and a second by Mr. Mike Bryan. Mayor?
Thank you. I seem to have misplaced my letter for that, that you should have in your packet. But this is an ongoing issue that we had with the body cameras that the council approved, I believe it was in November, and funded for each police officer to have a body camera. Those were... The 75 body camera units were received, but unfortunately, they were not the correct units that we feel were promised by the company. These units were requesting to be shipped back to the company and replaced with the correct units as soon as possible, and they, again, will be utilized by every member of the Tupelo Police Department, and we will have a strict policy in place that if they are going on duty, that the camera will be on and functioning. The issue with the cameras was one of compatibility. We had approved this. The administration requested and the council approved this for sole-source funding because we already have the in-car video equipment and then the at-the-station equipment. The body cameras would have to be... The footage from those cameras has to be downloaded onto the servers. The ones that we received were not compatible. There was some, I guess you'd say, would take about an hour for officer additional per day to either add to their shift or reduce from their patrol time. Other issues. Long story short, we want the right body cameras so that we can get these on the men and women of Tupelo Police Department to protect both the officer's safety and also the citizens that would come in contact with the officers, and then would eliminate any type of dispute as to what may or may not have happened with interaction with a police officer. This will cost $12,850. That will come out of the tobacco money. We will continue to work through our city attorney to try to get some of this money back. We don't necessarily feel that... We basically, there was a contract dispute, and we feel like we should have gotten the right ones to begin with at the price we'd ordered them for. But be that as it may, we're going to continue to pursue that through negotiation and possible litigation. But we do think that it's necessary to spend the $12,850 and get these cameras in place.
I might add is that the reason that we have to surplus this, that the city clerk already added them to the city's inventory, and so they officially have to be surplus so they can be sent back to the manufacturer.
That's right. Sorry for not mentioning that.
Yeah. Any questions?
Mr. President, I wish I had have known, because I can only speak for myself, when we found out that these cameras weren't working, because sometimes the public will ask, well, I thought you had body cameras. And my question was, yeah, we have body cameras, but I was sold that was either in work, in service. So I'm left in the dark. So when approving this, I would like to know for myself, when we get these cameras in, are we just going to drag around and with them? I need to know if they're going to be installed at a certain time or what, because people ask us, and sometimes we'd be the last one to know, where are these cameras at? So you're talking about nine to 10 months from the time we got them before or the time we approved them. Here it is, nine, 10 months later, and we re-ordered cameras, so. And we approved this tonight, I would like to go ahead and put a rush order on and get these things in service and right away, rather than this dragging on.
This can be done.
Mayor, if you could, if you could, even Don and the chief, come up with something so all the council can be briefed on the status and all that.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.14 is a contract change order to the Sharon Hills Drainant Project.
Make a motion, we accept the change order.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor?
This is, again, part of the ongoing project there at the Sharon Hills Lynn-Sirpo area. This is a change order requested by the engineers to complete the project.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item eight, there's nothing on the study agenda. Item nine, executive session. Mr. Logan, is there a need for executive session?
No, no, Mr. President.
Okay. Our legal counsel says there's no need for executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis and a second by Markel Whittington. All in favor? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.